Award where the application is, if they want to say anything first and then we'll open it up for general discussion. I will ask members if they wish to speak, just to put a note on the Microsoft Teams chat function so that I can see who wishes to speak and I will try and call people in order. For each application, we will have a discussion until all the points have been raised. We will then vote on the application and voting is simply a majority decision. In the event of a tie, the Chair has the casting vote. After we've done all the applications, there's a few other things for us to look at, some appeal decisions, which we'd like to review and make sure that we understand what's been supported on appeal, what hasn't. And then the delegated decisions that have been taken by officers, which we review at each meeting. So that's the process that we will go through. We'll also be having a short talk this evening from our new monitoring officer, which we'll do after we've done the minutes of the meeting. And can I remind members that Teams, which is what we use to hold these meetings, does have a four hour time limit. And so if we get just beyond 10pm, then we will have to finish because there wouldn't be any further time on the Teams meeting. I'm not anticipating that that will be an issue tonight, but you can never tell for certain. So those are my introductory comments. Items one and two then on the agenda are apologies for absence and declarations of interest. We've asked members to indicate these as they sign into Teams. So I'll ask Mr Ward to take us through those. So Mr Ward, over to you.
Thank you very much, Chair. So in attendance this evening, we have councillor David Bagshaw, councillor Lydia Ball, councillor David Grindel, councillor Theresa Cullen, councillor Margaret Handley, councillor Richard McCrae, councillor John McGrath, councillor Greg Marshall, councillor Philip Owen, councillor Dom Pringle, councillor Watts, the Chair, and councillor Willimots. Also in attendance is councillor Paul Simpson, who is substituting for councillor Richard Jackson, who's given his apologies. Councillor Steve Carr is also in attendance this evening as an ex officio member, which means that he can't vote. We have one declaration of interest, which is from councillor Steve Carr on item 5.3, but as I said earlier, councillor Carr won't be able to vote on that. Councillor Carr, would you like to explain the nature of that interest?
Yes, thank you, Jeremy. Yes, I am actually Chair of the Bramford Agreement Joint Committee.
Thank you very much, councillor Carr. So I will just add that unless anybody else has any declarations of interest, nobody's indicated. As the Chair has stated, joining us this evening are the officers, councillor, sorry, Brian Dawson, who's the Head of Planning, Andrew Edwards, who's the Legal Representative, and also Sachdev Khosri, who's the Monitoring Officer. If we could, Chair, I'll hand back to you for the minutes.
Thank you very much. So item three on the agenda is that we're asked to confirm that the minutes of the last meeting of the 30th of September are a correct record. There is in fact an amendment that will need to be made because the list of councillors present doesn't include councillor Greg Marshall, who was present at the meeting. So we'll add him on to the list. He is recorded as voting later on, but just been missed off the list of members at the start. So I will move, subject to that amendment, I'll move these as a true and correct record. Can I have a second for that, please?
I'll second that, Chair.
Thank you very much, and I'll hand over to Mr Ward to take the vote.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Bagshaw.
Four.
Councillor Ball.
Four.
Councillor Grindel.
Four.
Councillor Cullen.
Four.
Councillor Handley. Councillor Margaret Handley. Councillor McCrae.
Four.
Councillor McGrath.
Four.
Councillor Marshall.
Four.
Councillor Owen.
Four.
Councillor Pringle.
Four.
Councillor Watts.
Four.
Councillor Willimots. Councillor Willimots.
Four.
Thank you, and councillor Simpson.
Abstain, I was not present.
Thank you. So the slightly amended minutes are carried, Chair.
Thank you very much. Item four is notification of lobbying. We do have a lobbying form that we ask members to fill in because it's important that we are absolutely clear and abhorrent on this. And I'll also ask members if you have been lobbied, just to indicate at the start of the discussion or the start of any comment that you make on the item that you've been lobbied on, just so that anyone following this from the public is aware of it. Now, before we move on to which is the applications, as I mentioned, we have with us this evening our new Monitoring Officer, Sachdev. So I'm going to hand over to her to say a few words.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, members. As your new Monitoring Officer, you will not be surprised to hear that I've been closely observing how our virtual committee meetings are running. I've recognised the hard work and effort of officers and members in adapting to conducting such meetings on a virtual platform. You have all adapted to these changes extremely well. It is important, however, to keep our practices under careful review to ensure meetings continue to run smoothly and our decisions are sound and that the debates in reaching these decisions do not cause any adverse impact on the council or yourselves. Members, as you know, you are subject to greater scrutiny than the ordinary member of the public. So we need to be mindful of public perception, particularly when debating contentious applications, and ensure we operate to the highest standards at all times. The last few committee meetings I've observed, and in particular the last planning committee meeting, did not run as I was expecting, and it was difficult for both members and officers. So I would like to seek your support today to ensure that moving forward, members, when we're discussing and determining a planning application, conduct their business in a fair and respectful manner, in line with our own principles, and that you can find your considerations to the planning merits of the case, as the reasons for making a final decision should be clear, convincing, and supported by planning evidence. That really is the message that I hope will be obviously borne today and in all subsequent committee meetings, not just planning. And I thank you for your time today and thank the Chair for allowing me the opportunity to address you all and wish that this meeting goes as smoothly as possible. And would like to hand you back now to the Chair so that you can carry on and proceed with today's business. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sachev. And we look forward to working with you over many years from now on.
Thank you.
We'll move on then to the applications. The first one, application 5.1, is at One Tottenham Road, Bramford, Nottingham, to construct a 1.8 metre high, close boarded fence. I will mention right at the start, I have been lobbied by the applicant in respect of this application. Pardon me. I've had that cough all year, it's nothing new. The recommendation is that planning permission be refused, but I will ask firstly for Mr Dawson to introduce this item to us.
Thank you, Chair. Essentially, this is the one from the previous committee that didn't get determined. It's a fence, it's a 1.8 metre in height fence, approximately 11 metres in length that goes on the edge of the boundary. It's constructed in close proximity to the highway and causes restrictive use for pedestrians and users of that highway, hence the recommendation proposed for refusal. There's some clarity in sight, as you can get in an executive summary proposing to move the fence out to the edge of the existing pavement. Amendments have been sought to shamp for the fence, which is essentially create an angle on the fence by the driveway, as this would increase visibility in the interest of both pedestrian and highway safety. But the applicant agents have not supplied any amended plans or agreed to this change. Consequently, in line with highways advice, we recommend refusal of this application. There are no late items on this scheme. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. There's no public speakers on this application or written submissions. So we'll move straight to the discussion. So I shall move the recommendation, which is on page 11, that planning permission be refused.
I'll second that, Chair.
Thank you very much. This is actually my ward, so I will kick off. Having moved the recommendation, actually, I don't agree with it. I think it's unnecessary here. And that photo that we have on the screen at the moment illustrates exactly why. The fence is proposed to come out to the edge of the pavement. If vehicles were going to be coming right up to the fence to come out, then I would see exactly what the concern was. But that lamp post is right where vehicles would then go. I don't anticipate that vehicles will actually be driving through the lamp post. And so actually, the vehicles will be coming off the still dropped curb to the left of that as we look. This will put them away from the fence. And so whilst I understand fully the desire of officers to make sure that we're not doing something that creates a highways risk, actually we're not here. That lamp post means that vehicles will not be coming out right up to the fence. So I don't believe that there is in fact a risk at all. I don't think we've actually had a comment on this from County Highways. Certainly, I couldn't see one mentioned in the reports. And I think what we have here is our officers understandably being cautious, but I think actually over cautious in this instance. So actually, I would be quite happy to grant planning permission to this application. Okay, that's my say. Anybody else wish to speak? Nobody's indicated, so if you would like to speak, please do so. Please indicate in the meeting chat now. Councillor Willimot first then, please. Councillor Willimot.
Thank you, Chairman. I went there this afternoon to have a look at this. And I really question why we are wasting time on things like this. It should never have been necessary to bring it to this committee. That new piece of tarmac footpath you see there, that's two metres wide. And then the fence is set a further two metres back from that. Making, in language which most of us might understand, that's about 13 feet. And this refusal to, or a recommendation that we turn it down is, it's just not sound at all. It's complete nonsense. And I walked around quite a bit there, looked at the traffic, it's a very quiet road. And I see absolutely no reason to turn this down. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just so that we're clear, the proposal is to move that fence forward. So that two metre strip in the garden, the fence would come forward by that distance. Councillor Carr is indicated to speak next.
Thank you, Chair. I agree with everything you've said. Of course, councillor Willimot should be aware that this was actually called to the committee by yourself and councillor Tyler. And if it hadn't have been done, then it would have been refused under delegated decisions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to speak? Nobody else has indicated, so the recommendation is to refuse planning permission. So if you're in favour of refusing permission, then you'll vote for. If you're happy to grant planning permission, then you'll vote against the recommendation. So as nobody else wishes to speak, I'll hand over to Mr Ward to take us through the vote, please.
Thank you very much, Chair. Councillor David Bagshaw.
Against.
Councillor Ball.
Against.
Councillor Grindel.
Against.
Councillor Cullen.
Against.
Councillor Handley.
Against.
Councillor McCrae.
Against.
Councillor McGrath.
Against.
Councillor Marshall.
Against.
Councillor Owen.
Against.
Councillor Pringle.
Against.
Councillor Watts.
Against.
Councillor Willimots.
Against.
And councillor Simpson.
Against.
Thank you, Chair. So the recommendation has been refused.
Thank you very much. I will move a further recommendation then, that planning permission be granted with the precise conditions to be delegated to the Head of Planning in consultation with myself. So I'll move that recommendation.
I'll second that, Chair.
Thank you. And can we go straight to the vote on that, please, then, Mr Ward?
Thank you very much, Chair. Just for the committee's information, that was councillor John McGrath seconding. So councillor David Bagshaw.
Four.
Councillor Ball. Councillor Grindel.
Four.
Councillor Cullen.
Four.
Councillor Handley.
Four.
Councillor McCrae.
Four.
Councillor McGrath.
Four.
Councillor Marshall.
Four.
Councillor Owen.
Four.
Councillor Pringle.
Four.
Councillor Watts.
Four.
Councillor Willimots. And councillor Simpson.
Four.
That's carried, Chair.
Lovely. Thank you very much. So that is carried. We'll move on then to item 5.2. This was a deferred application from the last meeting. It's a hybrid application, as you can see, consisting of a full application for 132 dwellings with associated infrastructure, flood attenuation works, play area and open space, and an outline application for up to 200 dwellings, a local centre for retail, financial and professional services, restaurants, cafes, drinking establishments, hot food takeaways, et cetera, associated infrastructure, open space and flood attenuation works, with means of access included, but all other matters reserved. So partly a full application, partly an outline application. And you recall, we had some concerns last time, primarily about flooding and the hedgerow alongside Ilkston Road. So we've got more information back on those. I will hand over now to Mr Dawson to introduce this to us. So Mr Dawson, over to you.
Thank you, Chair. As was the case last time, this is quite a big scheme. So please allow me a little bit more time than usual to explain everything. As has been outlined, a major hybrid application with two elements, the detailed or the full planning mission for 132 dwellings, an outline planning mission with all matters reserved, except for access for up to 200 dwellings, a local centre following the A use classes. The larger site has outline permission for up to 450 dwellings. As outline permission has expired, this application has been made for remaining part of the site. The total number of dwellings across the wider site or main is approved at outline stage at 450. And the only change since the outline is the inclusion of the local centre. The site was allocated as a studio urban extension in the Alliance Course Strategy in 2014, 450 dwellings. Therefore, the principal development has already been established. Phase one, which is 118 dwellings of development, has received matters approval and has been constructed to the west of the site, as most of you will be aware. The full application site adjoins the phase one site and access will be taken from Ilkston Road to form a curved spine road linking through to the existing access to the west on Ilkston Road. The drainage ponds and play area are proposed towards the west of the site. The outline site, which is 200 dwellings, is the north east of the phase two site and extends towards the railway line, with the TPO woodland retained, which extends from Mayfield Drive to the east towards Boundary Book. We've had no objections from key consultees. I'll go through now individual elements of the scheme in different areas. Regarding to ecology, there are no local nature reserves on site, but there are some that join it to the east and west. There are two green infrastructure corridors through the northern part of the site. And a vegetative buffer is proposed beside the northern section of the brook, which is on the indicative outline site plans. It acknowledges that the road will pass through this area, but necessary access to the rearmost part of the site and species still able to move along the corridor. Additional planting beside the brook and additional bird and bat boxes adjacent to the trees proposed. It's considered subject to details of the landscaping scheme for the outline sites and details of the road bridge over the brook. And development will maintain the green infrastructure corridors through the site and cause no significant harm to biodiversity assets and connectivity. Site habitats offer breeding birds and bats, and the conditions requiring mitigation and further surveys proposed to ensure this protection are suggested as part of the mission. A small section of the north western end of TPO woodlands will be removed to facilitate access to the rear part of the site. And this was in the tree officer, that some TPOs would need to be removed and raise an objection to these removals. No environmental impact assessment is needed, given the lack of significant urbanising effects and the lack of nationally designated sites within and adjacent to this particular site. We don't consider there to be any significant harm to wildlife, to the local nature reserves, local wildlife sites, or the green infrastructure corridors, subject to further surveys, mitigation works, landscaping, which will always be secured through conditions. The hedgerow, which is something that was raised at the previous committee fronting Ilkston Road, will be maintained, albeit pruned, in order to enable the hedge to thicken. The only gaps proposed in the hedgerow along Ilkston roads are to allow either vehicular or cyclical possession access into the site. And paragraph 3.2.2 adds some additional information to this regard. Regarding to design, the phase one reserve matters appeal set the design standard. There are three character areas and a mix of dwelling sizes proposed, 24 affordable dwellings, and the density of development is 41 dwellings per hectare for phase two. There are 10 electrical vehicle charging points proposed, and this is conditioned as well, and offered as an extra for the remainder of the dwellings. Solar photovoltaic panels will be offered as an option as well. All the proposed houses will have water butts and a fabric-first approach. The outline scheme, it's 18.5 dwellings per hectare, due in large parts of the TPO woodland and the landscape buffers proposed alongside the brook and the eastern boundary. We consider it an overall efficient use of the site. We set all uses of sustainable design measures and provides a mix of house types with appropriate design. Regarding to amenity, there's sufficient distance to neighbouring dwellings on the Ilkston Road and Mayfield Drive to ensure acceptable relationships. We're conditioning the construction hours. Proposed dwellings are all considered to be acceptable size with good outlook from the windows, with front and rear gardens and there'll be landscaping around department blocks. There is a levels difference across the sites. Some plots located at a higher level than others. Sections will be submitted and retaining walls used and details of these and the boundary treatments are conditioned, again, to ensure appropriate amenity for all the proposed residents across the wider site. A particular note should be raised with regards to phase two site plots 237 to 250, where the floor levels here are higher. Proposed floor levels based on the plans are about 4.4 metres higher than the finished floor levels of the adjoining phase two dwellings. But there's a back-to-back minimum distance of 22 metres. And with the additional plans and outline levels to be conditioned, we do not believe this to be an issue. And with the condition attached, we can ensure control of this issue moving forward. Regarding to highways, there's no objection from the Nottingham County Council. There's no change to access that was agreed at the outline scheme. And a bus service could be routed through the site. There's adequate on-plant parking and a section 106 contribution towards the Ilkston Road, Coventry Lane, Higgins Lane, double mini roundabout junction improvement scheme, and the cycleway to Coventry Lane to be provided. We're still awaiting the comments from Hires England, unfortunately. But any suggestions or contributions will be included in section 106 to ensure that issue is covered. With regard to the traffic regulation order, which is again an issue raised at previous committee, the Highways Authority requested that the TRO is placed on the junction to enable the safe operation of it, but it will not be down the entire stretch of Ilkston Road. So there'll be some opportunity for on-street parking in this location, as is the case currently. The local centre proposed, which is A classes 1, 2, 3, 4 and 5, will meet the local need. And due to its size and location, we do not believe this has significant impact on the vitality and viability of any nearby town centres. And we're susceptible to conditions, including restricting the size of the centre to 500 square metres. There will be notes to applicants attached to this, any permission to basically ensure that the recent changes in government use classes are addressed, because recently all the used classes have changed. So it's still A1, A2, A3, A4, A5 or the new system. In section 106, it's based on principles that have all been agreed at the outline. Some payments have already been made with regards to education and ITPS. And affordable housing has been constructed in the phase one site. Significant contributions have been secured towards education, affordable housing, both on and off-site, ITPS, off-site highways work and open space. Again, there's further details in the reports. The site is important to housing living in the borough. Development is considered to be acceptable, subject to conditions and security in section 106. The final point, which is the application site is within Fund Zone 1, so it's the lowest risk of flooding. The drainage strategy is to mimic greenfield runoff rates. And this has been agreed by the local lead flood authority. And the scheme for phase two will condition to be in accordance with these details. Extensive flood mitigation works are undertaken as part of the phase one development, including flood storage conversation measures to north of the brook and 700 water installed tanks beneath Staple Road and Traoré Road to provide additional storage capacity. We are aware of the problems of flooding the local area, particularly the Traoré Park estates, but this development is not causing any increased flood risk downstream. The Environment Agency confirmed this at the meeting in August 2020, which was held by the local MP, that the main issues of the flooding on the Traoré Park estate were due to unprecedented rainfall at the time. We have had no objection from many of the technical consultees with regard to flooding, which is the Centrepower, local lead flood authority and Environment Agency. And we believe development is compliant with the requirements of the MPPF and acceptable flood risk terms. Following the committee meeting and deferral last time, further details were submitted from the applicants. And these have been summarised very well and in lots of detail at the start of the report. The main points, though, to mention really are that the Phil Farm had balancing ponds and flood storage capacity for 3,500,000 litres of water. And unfortunately, the Traoré Park estate was not built with such measures in place. The new flood plain area adjacent to the brook allows for any overspill to retain in the area. I'd make members particularly have a look at table 2.7, which indicates that in extreme flooding events following this development, the flow rate off the site is actually significantly reduced. All water infrastructure works proposed, both flooding and drainage related, have received relevant regulatory approvals from the key bodies. We are aware of the issues of flooding on the Traoré Park state and existing ponds elsewhere, but they're not as a result of this development. In terms of late items on that, we've had nothing in terms of neighbours or further key consultees. There was a further clarification from the applicant's highest consultants, Hires England, about some further sort of technical details, but we've had nothing, and we're still waiting, as I said at the start, some clarification from Hires England on this particular issue, but there's nothing further. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. I should have said at the start that I did ask Mr Dawson to give us quite a detailed introduction into this. We have statements to be read, both from the applicant and from an objector. So I'll hand over now to Mr Ward to read those statements to us.
Thank you very much, Chair. So the first statement is from the applicant Anita Davis, who states, members will recall that this application was heard at the last planning committee, where the only issues raised by our members were those relating to flood risk, the treatment of the hedgerow on Ilkston Road and the ability to park on Ilkston Road. As a result, and contrary to the recommendation of officers, the application was deferred. To recap, no other issues were identified by members in comprehensively addressing these specific matters in detail. Therefore, we look forward to members following the recommendation of their officers this evening and approving the application subject to the conditions set out in the committee report and subject to the necessary obligations being secured through section 106 agreements. In terms of the additional information provided by the applicant, members will note the addendum to the planning statement prepared by our consultant team. We do not wish to repeat in detail here the information provided in that addendum, as members will have read it in detail. We nevertheless briefly summarise these key matters. Flooding. The actual likelihood of flooding on Traoré Park has not increased as a result of the Phil Farm development. This is because the culvert under Stapleford Road has not been changed. The storage upstream of Stapleford Road- The storage upstream of Stapleford Road has been increased and the balancing pond slowed the rate of water accessing the brook. And it can be shown that there is greater storage capacity than prior to the development. The detail as to why this is the case is set out within the submitted addendum and is something I'm sure officers will be able to elaborate on tonight if necessary. Most importantly, it is, it is a further matter of fact that the flood event in Cranbourne Close on February the twenty, sorry, in February twenty twenty. Was not caused by field farm, rather it was caused by past infrastructure failings combined with a particularly high rainfall event. Testament to the appropriateness of the field farm drainage solution is the lack of any objection from all appropriate expert statutory consultees. The next subject is the parking on Ilkerson Road. And. Which is further stated that no traffic regulation orders are proposed by us. The highways authority imposed traffic regulation orders only where they consider they are necessary to improve the safe operation of a highway. In this regard, it is noted that the highways authority have recommended a traffic regulation order via condition number twenty five. To ensure that on-street parking does not compromise the safe operation of the highway. On-street parking will still be available on Ilkerson Road beyond the extent of the T R O. The next subject here is Ilkerson Road hedgerow. To confirm, as previously stated on the original application, the existing hedgerow on Ilkerson Road will be retained except where it is necessary to create vehicular and pedestrian access points. In the interest of good hedgerow husbandry, it will be pruned and trimmed as necessary to promote a better overall appearance. To conclude, we submit again that the application is one which aligns fully with the requirements of the council's development plan. Members will be aware that a section thirty eight and six in brackets of the act requires that. Application should be determined in accordance with the development plan and that doing otherwise will significantly jeopardise the council's ability. To fulfil the strategic aims of its local plan. In addition, doing otherwise is likely to have extremely serious, extremely serious consequences for Brockston based businesses. During the previous committee, a councillor made a request that a local employment, that local employment was considered. In recognition of this, we reviewed our subcontractors, suppliers and our own records. We found that the site engages a hundred and fifteen companies providing two hundred and twenty five individuals through the process of delivery to a greater or lesser extent. Of which currently fifty nine work for Brockston based companies and of those twenty two individuals live in Brockston. Many businesses operate on low returns and the loss of one day per week can equate to a twenty percent reduction in possible turnover, making it very difficult to operate. We therefore invite members to endorse the recommendation of your officers and resolve to approve this application. Which is in accordance with the council's development plan and has not received objections from the statutory consultees. And allow the delivery of a much, of much needed local housing, subject to the conditions and obligations which are set out in the committee report. As I say, that was from Anita Davis, the applicant. Chair, if I may, I'll read the objectors' statement, which is from Christine Chapman. And Christine Chapman goes on to say. The committee heard our earlier appeal on thirtieth of September and deferred development approval. I restate key points from our last submission. As victims of repeated and increased, increasingly, sorry, increasingly serious flooding. We ask committee to set out preconditions for approval of development extension, specifically to win assurances from field farm developments that. To fully reassess the capacity of their existing water management system up there and to guarantee Trail Park, both against floods deriving from it. And extra risks from new additional flood attenuation infrastructure servicing any extension. We firmly believe current drainage network is inadequate and a significant factor in three separate incidents last year. Brockston Borough ceased drainage operations in two thousand and twelve. Notts County Council and their contractors, V I A, took over responsibility. Developers may claim planning cooperation with both and perhaps Seven Trent Water plus Environment Agency. Yet these flood risk management agencies fail to grasp the severity of the problem or agree cause and remedy. Our maze prefer to, sorry, our maze prefer to blame riparian owners for Brooks, Brook flow obstruction. Or unprecedented weather. This default simply doesn't hold water. Residents successfully argued floodwater does not enter from the brook behind our property. It crosses Stapleford Road down the slope and the streets at the front, field farm pond probably contributes. Sixth of August, on a Zoom multi-agency meeting hosted by Darren Henry M P, finally conceded highways were indeed integral to water overflow management. Selective gully cleaning is claimed for the week after. V I A and Seven Trent apparently intend to ensure gully connection to main sewer network and clear running at Trail Stapleford Boundary. Similar connection is reportedly agreed in principle between these agencies if V I A add more drainage outside our houses. None of these may ever happen since twelfth of May, no agency will provide final written position. There is no sixth of August transcript, no straightforward action plan saying who will do what by when. Nor who will coordinate. These are just possible proposals from separate agencies gleaned from different communication to individual residents. We are entitled to expect a single point of contact, we only get not dash me forward slash gov dot U K. Our maze previously met M P Henry and Brockston Borough councillors across June and July, they failed to deliver his written objectives for sixth of August public, public meeting. Establishing root cause of flooding lead agency and agreed actions for support agencies to take. By noon today, M P's constituency office also failed to provide an out, this outcome record requested by us on the twenty third of August and tenth and twenty sixth of October. We already asked the M P to press the case to the Environment Secretary on twenty third of May, twenty eighth of June, thirtieth of July, twenty third of August, twenty eighth, sorry, the twenty first of September and early this month. So committee ought to, ought to want to challenge field farm developers, developers advice on flood risk and attenuation. Reopening at Ilkerson Railway Station faced lengthy delays to protect new crossing routes. We put higher priority on safeguarding our existing homes over unbuilt housing. They say, if you're up to the neck in alligators, you might forget your objective was to drain the swamp. And I should also state that at the beginning of Christine Chapman's statement, it says, I stress once more that our opposition is not a blanket opposition. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you very much. Well, the recommendations are to, or the recommendation is to grant planning permission subject to the conditions that. Pardon me, begin on page twenty two onwards, so I shall move those recommendations.
I'll second that, Chair.
Thank you very much. I'll turn first to councillor Richard McCrae. It's, this development is in councillor McCrae's ward, so councillor McCrae, over to you.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry it takes me so long, the buttons keep moving half the time I go on this thing. Right, obviously I, I thank the team, the officers for getting answers to the questions that we raised last time. I'm, I'm, I still do have concerns, obviously the hedge row, it's nice to hear that that's going to be retained and I can understand they've got to set bits down to make access, of course they have. But one of the concerns I did raise, which hasn't been addressed, it wasn't just the hedge row, it was the trees as well and there's a whole load of healthy trees along there. There's been no mention of whether they're going to be retained or cut down for the cycle path, I'm guessing it's the latter. And also there was mention of the section, so I keep looking down because I've, I've, I've got the paperwork in front of me. These, the section one oh six agreement says for alterations, improvements, whatever the wording was for Higgins Lane Junction with Ilkerson Road. And I was wondering if there's any chance or if it can be looked into or who do you ask? If that actually could be brought forward, because there's lots of people got lots of concerns about the junction with Ilkerson Road and Higgins Lane, especially since that crossing's been put where it's been put, but that's another story. People are parking all the way along there and I think the county council won't put the yellow lines down because they know the road's going to be widened, so if that's the case. Can we press them to widen the road quicker and then probably, hopefully put the double yellow lines on it? So that, if that can be looked into. I appreciate we've been got back to about the parking on Ilkerson Road and I'm sure when I let people know, they'll appreciate that as well because people were, were concerned and were worried. I'm still concerned that they want to put the recreation ground on there because I, me personally, I think it's going to create a us and them community, I would have rather seen the money. Go to improve the local parks, these three probably far within walking distance of the site. And it would have been nice to have made them better and then the youngsters and the adults as well come and use them parks and be part of the community instead of having their own community, you know, this is the best end of state, of course it is. It'd be nice to everyone to join in and not have us and them. I, I do like the way that they've said that they wanted to put the. What they call the affordable houses are spread out and they're not all stuck together like they are in phase one. But, and I've also got concerns and I have been lobbied, which I have filled the paperwork in and I emailed that across to Ryan because. I turned up on the site visit a little bit late, so I had to wander around on my own, but I, I know the area anyway. I am concerned and so are local businesses about them wanting to put shops on there because originally when the original applications came forward, not, not just for this phase, but you know, way back when. We was told that they didn't need to put shops on there because there's loads in the area, we sadly lost the Jaguar pub. And we've got shops there that was put there to benefit this development. We've got shops up at Montrose Court, we've got shops on Higgins Lane, we've got loads of shops, you know, within walking distance. We've also got a wonderful town centre which we're trying to get some money to improve it and the council are working hard on that with the community. And we want to force, you know, not force, we want to encourage people to use the high street and shop in the town centre. So I think putting shops up here, it defeats that object, we want these people to go down to Stapleford, you know, and use the wonderful shops we've got. They'll, they'll be opening again soon and it's a brilliant town. And that was some of my concerns that I wanted to raise, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Pringle, please, and that will be followed by councillor Grindel, so councillor Pringle.
Thank you very much, Chair. Having, having listened to the, the long letter from the, from the resident. I'd just like to highlight that she has actually lived in that house for thirty two years. And the first time that her garden flooded. In. November last year. The water didn't come from the brook, the second time when it, when it flooded her house and her garage. The water didn't come from Boundary Brook. And when the area was starting to flood in June, again, the water didn't come from Boundary Brook. Where it's coming from is off the land on both sides of the brook, one side is obviously the field farm estate and the other side is the farmland. Some of the things that we've found out about this, this situation is that all the agencies, every single one of them has said. It's nothing to do with them, Westermans, the builders say, well, we've done everything, it's nothing to do with us. So if all those agencies and the builders are saying it's nothing to do with us, where did the water come from? Well, quite clearly it came from the sky, there was a lot of it and the infrastructure that's in place. Did, couldn't cope with the amount of water that fell in November, February and June. I noticed that the, the Westermans representative only talks about February. There were three floods and that's three floods in a year. And going back to the resident that has lived there for thirty two years, those three floods affected their, their garden quite badly in one case. Flooded the house and the lady has only just been back in a house for a month or so since the flood in February. There are still two houses in Cranbourne Close that haven't been moved into and there is one more house in Cranbourne Close that is. Still having repairs carried out and there are a couple of houses on Trail Park Drive that are still having repairs found out, so I'll sort it out. So you can understand why the pedestrians, why the residents are upset about this proposal and at the moment, I haven't heard anything. That would allow me to, to support it in its current, current format. And it's, you know, it's just sort of the. The, the lack of information from the agencies. What, what myself, in conjunction with one of the residents has done is they're putting a, a freedom of information request to, to Seven Trent. Because two, two things happened, one in, in, in February and one in June. Was that all the, 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 the roads around Cranbourne Close, Trail Park Drive. And also the main road itself, Ilkerson and Stapleford Road. A huge amount of water accumulated there and for some reason, this is in February and June, that water took a long time to disappear. In February, when I got there at just after eight o'clock in the morning and the rain stopped at four o'clock, the level of water in Cranbourne Close was above my ankles. In June, after the rain had stopped about six o'clock in the evening, the water was still standing. In, in, in and around the houses in Cranbourne and Trail Park Drive. What happened was that for some reason, and lots of people have described it, it was just like somebody pulled the plug out on a bath. And all of a sudden, the water disappeared. That was why we did the freedom of information request to Seven Trent. What they came back to tell us was, and they didn't mention February, we've gone back to them again to ask about February. What they told us happened in June was that the pumping station, which is at the bottom of Trail Park Drive, has got three pumps in it. And when the water gets up to two metres, a pump comes in and what that does is it starts to remove the excess water that's accumulating. The first pump failed after five minutes. The second pump kicked in. And what happened then was that failed after another ten minutes and then the third pump came in. And because it was only working on one pump instead of three, what happened was that's what took the water so long to go away. We asked them, did that happen in February, we haven't been told that. So that's, they're, they're the sort of questions that we really, really need to have asked about this whole, this whole development because. You know, there's no getting away from it, that people that have lived there for thirty two years and haven't suffered floods. Have, have now, three times within a year, suffered a flood. And the coincidence is, and it may not be the cause, but there is something else that needs to be fixed, the coincidence is that the, the area they live in. As houses as well in Stapleford Road and Ilkerson Road have flooded three times. There's, there is some good news though, what we've done, myself and councillor McCrae, we've worked with the Environment Agency and we've been granted. A hundred and eighty seven thousand five hundred pounds of mitigation. Bits and pieces for some of the houses that have been flooded or for the houses that have been flooded. And that's, that's in the process of being sorted now, so that's good for the, the people involved. Sadly, it won't stop their gardens being flooded. It'll, it'll protect the houses, but it will not stop the, the roads and the gardens being flooded if everything is left in the current format. So as, as I said, Chair, I cannot accept this proposal. And, and, and will not vote for it this evening because I, I just want the agencies that are involved. To just be a bit honest with, with the residents, you've heard Mrs Chapman, she's saying lots of, what she's saying is absolutely right. All sorts of agencies have said we'll do something and they've heard absolutely nothing from them. So if that can be sorted, and the other thing I'd like to say as well is that can we ask Westermans? When, before they start phase two, can they put the attenuation pond that they're going to put in there? Cannot be built at the beginning of the development. That way, what that will do is that will lead or help. Any other flooding from, from happening, so that's, that's all I've got to say, thank you very much.
Thank you, Anna. Ask me to come back to respond to any comments like your, your last request at the end of the discussion. I, I think all of us would want to say, well done on raising that money for, or securing that money for the, the resident for attenuation measures. I've got councillor Grindel, councillor McGrath, councillor Carr and councillor Owen to speak, please. So councillor Grindel.
Thank you, Chair. Chair, I'm, I'm not going to take up a lot of time, obviously because time is ticking on already. It's a very important application. For, for Stapleford area. And I, I would say that it's good that we're having. Charges for vehicles, solar panels. For housing, which is very, very important considering that we've been discussing all. which is very, very important considering that we've been discussing over the last few weeks this particular subject of, um, power. And, um, obviously, hopefully it will be cheap power. Um, I would like to say that, um, I was concerned at last, uh, time that this came up, that, um, the hedging. Um, but it seems to have the information we've been given this evening, I seem quite happy with the answers, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, councillor McGrath, please.
Thank you, Chair. Just, I'll just be brief as well. I mean, reading through it, David, and I'm uh, I'm not as bright as Mo's, but reading through it, uh, Westermann seemed to answer quite a lot regarding the flooding, especially with the size of them tanks. But also moving forward, if we can possibly, I heard councillor Pringle on about Cranbourne Close and all that. It seems that that's been there for a long time and they they're trying to say that it's because of Fields Farm. I think we need to look, talk to the Environment Agency, Seven Trent and all that to find a a solution for that end of the estate. Sorry, which, if someone can admit that something needs doing, that might help and ease a lot of people's problems. Right? The other one is is two, as the lady addressed from Westermans about the employment side of things. I know it's not a planning issue, but in my calculation, David, in my calculation, out the hundred and fifty eight that's, or two hundred and thirty four, sorry, off the top of my head, without going through my papers, where it's on, uh, page seventeen on two point four, so Ryan can answer it or we can have a word about it. There's only actually fifty two employed, which is only a third. I'd much appreciate if we can start trying to talk to Westermans about employing apprentices, especially as it looks like, well, hopefully will be a major development on our site or in our town. The other quick one as well is, we need to look, as councillor McCrae pointed out, about the junction. So it might help the residents if they've got a rough idea, a bit of a consultation about that. I know it's further down the road, but it might ease some residents worries. And the third one was the one oh six agreement, David, which I I mentioned before. You've got Pit Lane Recreation Ground, which is at the top end of Boundary Brook. Right? And also the football pitches or the football pitch. And perhaps whoever gets involved in negotiating the one oh one oh six money, we can look to improve both them sites for more green space within the actual development itself. Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much. Councillor Carr and then councillor Owen and then councillor Ball. Councillor Carr.
Thank you, Chair. I I need to point out to councillors that this was deferred from the previous meeting. Uh, entirely due, uh, to asking the flood agencies again about their recommendations and what their advice is. Um, we've done that and the advice that they've given us hasn't changed from what it was at the previous committee. We can do no more than that, Mr Chair. And also, uh, it's been pointed out quite rightly by, uh, Mr Dawson and and you can read it yourself in paragraph two point seven. It's presumed Trial Park Estate was built in the nineteen nineties, predating the introduction of development flood risk guidance. So parts of the estate were built in high risk flood zones. And the development itself has increased flood risk in the area because there is no storm sewer balancing, which is now standard practice on new developments. Now, that we can't be, you know, the planning does not, um, allow us, planning decisions do not allow us to take into account what's happened in previous planning applications. Because this, we have to look at this site on its own. And we have been advised by the Environment Agency, Seven Trent Water and the Local Flood Authority that the brook is not of the problem here. And we should remember that. And and I've heard several members again saying, we need to ask this, we need to ask that. Again, I need to remind you that we've deferred this once. If we had those those concerns, we should have brought them out at the last meeting so we could get all these questions out of the way. Because if we defer it again tonight or we refuse it, then we're going to be in serious trouble. Either we're going to be taken to appeal because of a slow determination or it will be appealed because we refused it. But there's nothing to support refusing it. It's quite, it's quite that simple, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, I'm just going to pick up on a point that councillor Pringle, uh, raised that last question. Because I've just been looking at the, um, conditions whilst, uh, people have been talking. And we do actually have conditions that require phasing of work and also the submission and approval of a drainage scheme with a timetable for that. So, um, that would be possible to, uh, require the work to be done with the drainage, uh, first. I I think the way to deal with that is to leave that for the officers in their discussions uh, with the developers. There may be good logistical reasons why that's not possible. But the officers clearly know our, um, uh, our views on that. Okay, I've got councillor Owen, councillor Ball and then councillor Pringle wants to, Pringle wants to come in again. And can I thank councillors so far for keeping their submissions, uh, short and pretty much to the point. So councillor Owen.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Seems to me that there are two issues here that would support a refusal tonight. So I think it's quite wrong to say that there's nothing to support refusal. I think there is. I think there are two issues. If I've understood them correctly, which I may not have done. The first one, if I understood Mr Dawson correctly, was that we are still awaiting detailed comments from Highways England regarding infra, road infrastructure. And that somehow is all going to be tied up in a section one oh six notice, which will be done in the background. I'm sorry, I don't think that's good enough if I understood that correctly, that we are still awaiting those observations. Those observations need to be in front of the committee when we are making a decision. Because it may be that there are additional questions that we would wish to ask. There it may be that there are considerable concerns that we have about what is proposed and what isn't proposed. So on those grounds alone, if I've understood Mr Dawson correctly, on those grounds alone, I could not support approval of this application this evening. But the second issue, of course, comes back to the one of flooding. And we are told by councillor Pringle and indeed more particularly by residents of Trial Park that until Field Farm Phase One was built, there were no issues regarding flooding of their properties or minimal issues. But since that development of Field Farm has taken place, there have been three significant issues of flooding. Now, the developer dismisses that in terms of, ah, well, it rained a lot. Well, yes, this is the United Kingdom. It does rain a lot, unfortunately. And we can expect it to carry on raining a lot. The only difference between it raining a lot all those years, over the past thirty years, and raining a lot now and flooding taking place is that we have phase one development at Field Farm. So it's quite understandable that residents who are being flooded are greatly concerned about the additional risks that are being posed. We heard a lot from the report read out on behalf of the developer. We heard a lot, but I don't think anything new was said. And that was what we were asking for when we deferred at our last meeting. We were not only asking questions, but we were asking particularly what extra they would do to deal with the problems that were being counted, yes, by existing properties, that it appears have been added to by the development carried out by Westermans during the first phase. And within all of that comment that was read out by Mr Ward, I heard nothing new. Yes, they stated what they were planning to do, but they didn't state in response to our request what extra they would do to alleviate the issues that are occurring. And that is what I was expecting to hear tonight. We hear from Seven Trent or we're told that Seven Trent have raised no objections to the development. Well, what's new? When ever have Seven Trent raised an objection? If they indicated, if Seven Trent indicated that there might be an issue, what is likely to happen is that Seven Trent would have to spend an awful lot of money to help alleviate the problems. It wouldn't be entirely the developer. So it comes as no great surprise to me that Seven Trent are not raising any objections. I don't think the reasons that we gave last time for a deferment have been dealt with satisfactorily. And for that reason, I shall be voting against the proposal this evening. And I would like, Chairman, a recorded vote on this application, on the voting on this application. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm very happy to agree a recorded vote or second that, uh, that proposal. So we will, when we come to it, have a recorded vote, uh, on this. Uh, councillor Ball next, please, and then councillor Pringle.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, yes, I I will be brief, but I I would like to say that I do support Don Pringle because he's worked long and hard with these residents in Trial Park. And it, and we know their concerns. And I do feel that if Don, the way he's represented them and I need to support him over this, we'd be letting those residents down. Because it's our duty to support them and to find out why this is happening to them. I mean, I don't think anything has been done since the last meeting. I just think that nobody knows, knows how to deal with this problem. And I think some people actually are sticking their head in the sand and hoping the problem will go away. Well, it won't go away. But let's face it, we represent these people and we should be there to help them and make sure that things work out. Not only for them, but for the new people that will be living in Field Farm. And I do hope that you all have a few sympathies for these people. Thank you.
Chair, can I ask for a ruling from the monitoring officer, please?
On what point, councillor Carr?
On the point that, is it, is it the the right thing to be doing? At voting potentially against a planning application on the basis that they want to support their councillor's been doing a lot of work? Surely we should be basing our decisions on planning law?
Uh, I will ask the monitoring officer to come in at the end, uh, again to address, uh, that. Um, councillor Pringle, though, has been waiting to, uh, to speak, so I'll call councillor Pringle, please.
Thank you, Chair. It's just a very, very quick point. Uh, councillor Carr, when he spoke earlier, talked about, uh, uh, Boundary Brook, uh, causing the problem. In actual fact, if you listen to what I said and to what Mrs Chapman said, it's not Boundary Brook that's causing the flooding. The flooding is coming off the fields, not through the brook, onto the road, which is Ilkston Road and Stapleford Road, which are based in Stapleford and Trial, uh, respectively. And it's then going through the gardens of those houses on that road, on that main road, uh, through the, right the way through the gardens and then going into Cranbourne Close and flooding Cranbourne Close, flooding the roads in Trial Park Drive and flooding houses in Trial Park Drive. It's nothing to do with the brook. The people that have been there, Mrs Chapman said in her letter, she's been there for thirty two years and the water didn't come from the brook that caused the flooding. The water is coming off the land, as I said, either from Field Farm side or from the other side of the brook, which is the the, uh, the trial side. Uh, I'd just like to make that point. It's not the brook that's causing the problem. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nobody else has indicated to, uh, speak. Um, I just want to have a few, uh, comments. Um, uh, then I'm going to ask, uh, I think first the monitoring officer and then, uh, Mr Dawson to set the planning to pick up on the, uh, the point. So if those two could, uh, stand ready, I would be grateful. Um, pardon me. Um, it seems to me that there are some objections being put forward here purely for the sake of objecting. Now, I want to make it very clear that I do not include councillor Pringle in that, who has, uh, worked very hard for his residents and I think, uh, is doing, um, a good job of articulating their concerns. But to suggest bad faith on behalf of Seven Trent simply because is, uh, to my mind, inappropriate and unhelpful. When we look at the planning issues, we're looking at whether we can make sure that this development does not make matters worse. We can't insist that this development puts right a problem that is not of their making. I don't believe it's fair to say that the flooding that has occurred and, uh, as members will know, I've been flooded myself. I know exactly how bad that feels, how awful it is. Uh, and I have immense sympathy for everyone who goes through that. But I don't think we can simply say, well, because phase one was there, phase one must be responsible. The evidence that we have, which is in front of all the members, says that phase one is not responsible. Uh, to use councillor Owen's phraseology, yes, it has rained a lot. A large reason it's rained a lot is because of climate change. We need to adapt our communities and, uh, create resilience in our communities to cope with climate change because it is a reality, uh, that we're having to cope with. And unfortunately, the Trial Park Estate doesn't seem to have been designed in a way that makes it easy to do that. This is not a case of saying, well, we're going to wash our hands of it. I think it's absolutely right that this council insists that Seven Trent, the county council, anybody else that we need to bring into the picture, work together to come up with an urgent resolution for our residents. I know in Brampton, where we had a lot of flooding this year, we've been able to ensure that work is being done to identify the problems and then fix, uh, the problems. And I can't see at all why the residents of trial should not, um, have the same, uh, protections, the same, uh, service that the residents of Brampton have had. So, um, I'm not saying we can't solve it, but looking at a new planning application is not the way to solve a a longstanding, uh, problem. Uh, I I see the comment from councillor Pringle that a lot of Trial Park was built by Westermans. But the point has already been made that standards have changed, requirements have changed since Trial Park, uh, was built. Um, it's unfortunate, but that is the reality. Now, we do need to work with the residents to come up with a solution and to to insist that, uh, the people do it. But this planning application is not the right means to, uh, to do that. And so I cannot see any reason, any good reason, uh, to vote against this application and I will be voting for it. Now, nobody else has asked to speak, so I'm going to ask, um, uh, I can't remember which order I said. Uh, did we say monitoring and then planning, uh, to, uh, deal with matters? So we'll we'll do it in that order if we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you councillor Carr for for asking for some further clarification. I think at the start of this meeting, uh, the point I make i- is really unfolding before us. Uh, applications clearly can come in with a lot of public interest and pressure uh, in in respect to the issues that they're experiencing. Uh, and they are clearly being put forward, uh, by members in their discussions. But when it comes to actually finalizing any reasons, um, for a grant or refusal of an application, they actually say rightfully must be planning considerations. they actually say rightfully must be planning considerations. And that was the point I think I was trying to make at the start is that there is a temptation to let other considerations seep in, but we must be careful not to let that materially affect the fact if they're not a planning consideration. I know obviously we've got Ryan that's going to speak after me. And, you know, they've already set out in their application, or sorry, in their report, what is material. And I think if you need him to home in again on any of those points, hopefully he'll be able to clarify further for you.
Thanks, Sach. And so I'll hand over now to Mr Dawson to pick up any points and then we will move to the vote.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Several points were raised there, so I've been scribbling down to hope to cover all of them. I'll deal with flooding at the end, but everything else was raised. Trees, there are several that are proposed across the site. Some of the boundary will go. Some of the trees on actual boundary with Ilkston Road are part of what we call a section 278. They're highways trees, not responsible to developer. But the landscaping scheme comes this, and there's several trees proposed across the wider site. Questions regarding roundabouts. This scheme, being an allocated scheme, has been looked at in regard to the wider implications and the highways and the double roundabouts near the Coop, nowhere the old Jaguar pub was. There'll be contributions towards that as part of section 106. However, that'll be a, those, the improvements to those roundabouts and the money towards it will be part of a wider sum that will come from other developments both to the west and the east of Conchi Lane, the west of Conchi Lane, which we're going to talk about after this development. So it will have to be a wait till that money comes in before anything happens with it, I would imagine. The leap, so, sorry, the local education area for play is needed on sites due to the size of developments. Yes, first planning policies, as you're all aware, and because the development is of significant scale, we basically need to ensure that there's a leap on site. The local centre, we consider it small and not going to impact on the vitality of the State for Town Centre or others nearby. It's been restricted to a certain size and conditions 19 and 20, both restrict the size and restrict it to individual uses rather than one big company coming in. Again, to protect the vitality and the viability of the town centres nearby. Westamans are a local company and I know they're based very nearby in Chilwell and they employ a lot of the local people. And it has been raised some submissions that they'll continue to employ local people. And indeed, if they suggested this development doesn't go ahead, they may have to lay some people off. So I'll make the point to them about apprentices, et cetera, but they are local, they're a local company, they employ local people in your respect. Right, in regard to the comments raised about the highways England, we've been chasing them regularly and still unfortunately they're querying some of the data submitted by the applicants. My understanding and the issues raised by highways England are as follows. Willerton Vale, these are about the junctions and various roads when I refer to them. The Willerton Vale junction, the impacts are not severe. There's a simple need to optimise signal controller timings. The junction at Brampton is already over capacity, the Brampton Islands, I'm guessing. And therefore, it is sensitive to additional traffic. Dapkins is suggesting a proportionate contribution towards the past improvement scheme on this roundabout. And that will include in section 106. And there's no significant impacts on the Bardills Islands. Again, the recommendation is subject to agreeing to these requests. And the applicants already said, whatever, whatever the resolution of those discussions are with highways England, they'll be included in section 106 to ensure that these three particular junctions are not significantly impacting on my development. The situation's not made any worse. Coming on to flooding, I will ask legal to come in on this at the end, if that's okay. I think we need to look at the planning matters here and it's, the scheme is NPPF compliant in terms of the fact that they need to make sure it washes its face and doesn't make the situation worse anywhere else. I have said it in the report, but I think a refusal on flooding is, would be unjustifiable because the key stakeholders have come back and said it, there's no issues here. The submitted flood assessments are okay, the drainage capacities are right, the measures they're putting in place on site are okay. That any of the developers, Westamans, need to actually make sure this, this scheme has greenfield rates or better. As said at the start of the report, again, section 2.7, the flooding rates are actually better in the 100-year, 30-year, 100-year climate change events as a result of this development. But again, I would iterate that it's, everything comes from flooding grounds where it's okay with it. But we, I don't believe a refusal based on flooding grounds is justifiable because none of the key stakeholders object to this particular development on those grounds. The other questions particularly regarding to that, the ponds, the tenoration ponds will be put in at the start, which is exactly the same as on phase one. And condition 26 talks about no development above slab level in until the drainage works are concluded. So that should, I would hope, address some of the concerns about the, the works going in at the start of developments before anything moves forward. I think that's everything that was raised. Thank you, Chair. But I will ask legal to come in on the point about flooding, if I may.
Right, please do, yes, thanks.
Yes, thank you, Chair. If I could address the committee in relation to that, I'd be grateful. And so in relation to flooding, the reports contain a significant amount of evidence in response to the flooding concerns, which concludes that the proposed development is acceptable and will not exacerbate any existing flooding to neighbouring estates. And as has already been said, but it's important to appreciate this from a legal point of view, that the applicant cannot be held responsible or required to rectify any flooding issues that are not associated with this development. And notably, the statutory consultees are satisfied with the assessments that have been carried out. The mitigation measures that are proposed and also the conditions that are proposed to be attached to the planning permission. And members are aware, and have already been reminded in this committee, that their decision must be based on sound planning reasons if the decision is going to withstand appeal. And not only should members identify a planning reason, because of course flooding is a material planning consideration, but weight, members should also ensure that it carries sufficient weight. And weight and importance that should be attached to a reason is a matter for your judgment, but generally you'll be more able to justify a reason if you've got evidence to support it. And if your reasons are neither sound nor carry sufficient weight, then an appeal against your decision is likely to be successful. And there's a high risk in that situation that the council will be ordered to pay the costs of the appeal, which can be considerable. The Supreme Court has ruled that as custodians of the public purse, members should bear in mind the financial consequences of their decisions insofar as making sure that when exercising planning judgment, it is done in line with the planning merits of the application. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. I've got three councillors wishing to raise points. Can I ask councillors to make these quick points if at all possible? So we've got councillor Willemmott, then councillor McGrath, then councillor Carr.
Thank you, Chairman. I pick up on the point made by councillor Carr about we should stick with planning law. And I'll be brief. Under the NPPF, planning and flood risk is under clauses 155 to 165. And clause 163 states that when determining any planning applications, LPAs, which is what we are, should ensure that flood risk is not increased elsewhere. So what we have to consider there is councillor Pringle has explained to us quite graphically about floods that have occurred, which are recent and there's no history of such flooding in the past. So the responsibility cannot be shoved off onto the statutory consultees. It is the duty of the local planning authority to do due diligence. And we have to consider, have we done that? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor McGrath, and then councillor Carr and councillor McCrae.
McGrath, thank you, David. I haven't been called that for a long time. Just a quick one, and I thank Ryan for going through quite a lot and the legal lady as well. He didn't adhere to what I mentioned about Pit Lane Recreation Ground and the 106 agreements. That's my concern to improve both that area as well as the green space.
Right, thank you. Councillor, an apology for getting your name on. It's been a long day already. Councillor Carr.
Thank you, Chair. Can I ask Angela a couple of questions just related? Given that this is in our local plan, which was only passed last year, and we also have outline planning permission, which was granted after this committee refused permission and it was overturned by the Secretary of State Inspector. And also the fact that two councillors on this meeting tonight publicly, and probably the applicants are listening, have said that the reason they're voting against this application is to support the campaigning efforts of a fellow councillor. What are the chances that if we refuse this, that we won't be hauled over the coals by the inspectorate and end up with a considerable cost to this council?
Right, thanks. I'm not sure that's a fair question to ask, but we'll see if legal want to answer that in a moment. Councillor McCrae wishes to raise a question as well, and then I'm going to go back to the officers and then we'll take the vote. Richard.
Yeah, sorry. It was just a quick one. Just about the section 106 and mentioning of Ilkston Road and Higgins Lane. And he mentioned that we might have to wait for money for all the developments to come through. Unless things have changed or unless I read it wrong, I thought originally the section 106 was 300th house had been built, then the section 106 would kick in, the alterations to that junction. And that's why I was wondering if it could be just moved forward a little bit, you know, because that junction is, I'm not saying it's dangerous, I'm not an expert in roads and that, but to me, it's not as safe as it could be. And perhaps if it, if it was brought forward and it was widened, I'm assuming that's the plans, and they put the lines on there, that's going to save the people parking. And anything we can do to make it safer for people has got to be a good thing. And I'm just hoping that that is still the case. And if we can bring it forward, because I wouldn't like to think that we've got to wait for future developments to chuck some money in the pot because that's going to be even longer than I was expecting it to. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to ask Mr Dawson to come in. Angela's put a comment on, but I'll ask her to come in after Ryan. So Mr Dawson first, please.
Thank you, Chair. The, essentially, the, I think the question's asked, there's a £432,000 contribution on site for open space maintenance and the woodland on site. It's actually on site, so I think that's within the wider area regardless of actually pit lane itself. They, they still have to pay out the contributions too. We can ask the question if we can pay it sooner and I will do that. Well, in 300 dwelling, there's obviously regular trigger points across the site. We can ask that question. I think that's the comment you raised councillor McCrae, we can ask that. My point in regard to the, the roundabouts and the wider sort of highways works was more that this, the improvements to the wider highways have all been looked into holistically with east of Conchi Lane, west of Conchi Lane and this site itself, rather than just in isolation. So some of, some of the works will come on board immediately as the site develops and some will come later down the line. I will ask the question if we can actually bring some of the contributions forward sooner for some elements, although that had to be discussed with regards with the highways authority in that respect. I think that was the two questions that were asked, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Angela, do you want to just pick up on that question that was asked to you?
Yes, Chair, I can just confirm that reasons for refusal must be precise, specific and relevant. The applicant must fully understand why planning permission has been refused. And members will know that sometimes even when appeals are successful, cost applications are denied. But this is when the decision can be backed up by evidence or clear facts which give it merit. If there's insufficient evidence and the applicant suffers wasted costs, then the council may be determined to have behaved unreasonably and that is the threshold for costs. So again, it's just having a sound reasoning backed up by evidence which has sufficient weight. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Okay, well, it's been moved to seconded that we have a recorded vote. So I'm going to ask Mr Ward to take us through the vote, please. If you're in favour of granting planning permission, which is the recommendation you vote for, if you're opposed to it, you vote against. Mr Ward, over to you.
Thank you very much, Chair. I'll just remind the committee and those viewing that councillor David Watts originally proposed the recommendation and that was seconded by councillor McGrath. And councillor Philip Owen proposed a recorded vote and councillor Watts seconded that. So this will be a recorded vote. Councillor David Bexhill.
For.
Councillor Lydia Ball.
Against.
Councillor Grindel.
For.
Councillor Cullen.
For.
Councillor Handley.
For.
Councillor McCrae.
Against.
Councillor McGrath.
For.
Councillor Marshall.
For.
Councillor Owen.
Against.
Councillor Pringle.
Against.
Councillor Watts.
For.
Councillor Willemmott.
Against.
And councillor Simpson.
Against.
So I can just confirm that there were seven votes for and six against, therefore that is carried, Chair. Thank you very much. And thank you all members for your contributions to that debate. Move on then to item 5.3 on page 95 of the agenda. This is land adjacent to and north west of Brampton crematorium, Coventry Lane in Brampton. Councillor Richard McCrae will tell me any moment now that it's actually in Stapleford North, which it is. And the proposal here is for an outline application to construct residential development with all matters reserved except for the formation of a vehicular access from Coventry Lane. And so the recommendation here will be to grant planning permission, which I shall move in a few minutes. So Mr Dawson, would you like to introduce this one for us, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Again, this is an allocated site under the part two of the local plan. And they're asking for an outline application with only access being considered at this stage. Up to 190 dwellings with existing access off Coventry Lane on Sidings Lane being reconfigured. The scheme is allocated, so the principal development is already established. The main issues relate to the highway mitigation measures, sufficient buffers between the crematorium and Stapleford Hill, green infrastructure corridors and impacts on the local nature reserves. The whole allocation of the wider site is for up to 240 homes, but the north eastern part of the site is not on the consideration at this stage and will be subject to a later application. The southern border of the site borders the field farm phase two proposal we've just discussed. And the section 166 considerations, particularly regarding to highways, ensure that the works accommodate both sites. What I mean by that is that it's, it's not piecemeal, it's more that you put the works in to accommodate development in the wider area. We've had no objections to any of the key stakeholders. The highways, there are several road improvements, including a proposal for a traffic regulation order on Conchi Lane and various measures to reduce the traffic speed. Paragraph 6.3.3 of the report goes into this in more detail. There are, there are links to the field farm development, but there's no specific route into the local nature reserve on the south of the site. This is a request of Notts Wildlife Trust to prevent further erosion of it. Backing into flooding, unfortunately, the flood assessment submitted shows a very low risk of flooding to the site overall. And this development will not exacerbate any of the flooding issues in the wider area. There are specific conditions attached to this planning mission in this regard, including finished floor levels for all the housing on site. Following concerns raised largely as part of the adjacent field farm development, BSP carried out further flooding work. Again, there's more detail in paragraph 6.4.10 in the reports, but the bottom line is that the flooding is not increased as a result of this development. And the outflow rates were actually reduced by 43% and 55% into the brook following this development for the 30-year and 100-year flood events. We've got to the section 106, there's £300,000 for highest contribution is now agreed. We've got to the section 166, um, there's £300,000 for highest contributions now agreed. Um, I'll cover this in the late items, but in the report it says under discussion, but the, um, there were a few issues resolved. That's now been agreed 300 grand for highest contributions and £53,000 for corridor improvements in the roundabouts. 716,000, 250 for education, £120,000 for open space and £102,000 towards health. It'll be 30% affordable housing, um, across the site. All of these issues have been, um, agreed by applicants and will be in its company legal agreement. Um, there are quite a few late items on this, um, so please bear with me when I go through those. Um, bases of correction in reports and paragraph 1.2, the blocks of our council owned land is to the west, not the southeast as shown on the map. Um, is based the land around the creme, was counted last. Um, amended plans have been submitted, which exclude the furniture business land, the northern end of Sidings Lane. And they reduce the overall site area by approximately 0.08 hectares. Again, that's shown in the late items. Um, the agents basically advised that income landowners not have yet alternative premises and it could delay the completion of the section 16. So they basically, um, taken them out, the red line for this development as a result of that. The concept plan has been amended, um, as a result. Um, and the footpath links directly from the site into the nature reserve, um, have been removed following the discussions in Notts Wildlife Trust. Um, the committee reports constraints map has been amended accordingly and has attached these late items, um, which I think you can see. Then there are some amendments to the conditions, um, following receipt of an amended site location plan, condition three is amended, um, to actually address that. There is inclusion of a phasing condition at the request of the agent, um, which I'll read is basically no development shall commence until phasing plan for the whole site has been submitted to and approved in writing by the local planning authority. Then should be implemented in accordance with the approved phasing plan. This is to secure an orderly form of developments. Um, as a result of that phasing plan, conditions four, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14 and 15 are amended to basically include a phasing element. Um, so for example, no development, including site clearance in respect of any individual phase shall commence until et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Um, I won't go through all the conditions, but you get the gist that essentially we're putting the phasing element into the conditions. Um, the third bullet point of condition 18 is amended to include additional words respective footpaths and cycleways. That's just for clarity. Um, and the condition 25 wording is revised to the following. Um, finish for all of all dwellings shall be submitted to an agreed in writing by local planning authority prior to any phase, including site clearance. Again, this is just for clarity purposes. And again, in late items, as I mentioned earlier, the applicant has agreed that it will pay the 300 grand as a bus service contributions part section 166 agreement that's referred to in the report. That is all, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The, uh, recommendation is set out on, oh no, before we do that, we have a, um, submission from Peter James Holmes. So I will ask, uh, Mr Ward to read that to us.
Thank you very much, Chair. So as you say, this is from Peter James Holmes, the applicant, who says, "Thank you, Chair and members of the committee for the opportunity to endorse and commend your officer's report to you. It is unequivocal in its recommendation to deliver this allocated housing site. The planning process has been fully collaborative and we are grateful for the commitment, professionalism and support of your officers during this difficult time. The proposal forms an essential component of the borough's housing allocations in five years' supply. Policy could not be clearer. Development proposals that accord with an up-to-date development plan should be approved without delay. The local plan trajectory, sorry, anticipates delivery from the site by April next year. More important than the numbers, this site will deliver a mix of quality homes for local people. A significant proportion will be affordable homes directly available for lower income families and key workers on the housing waiting list. The allocation of the site recognised the potential to integrate with the wider countryside and the network of walking, walking and cycling routes and leisure spaces that surround it. The proposal will give residents the fullest opportunity to connect with the environment around them at a time when this has never been more important. At the same time, the proposal is contained to land of low habitat value, with trees and hedgerows being retained and protected to maintain natural wildlife corridors. Open spaces and green pedestrian and cycle networks will be naturalised in appearance and will utilise native planting to create additional ecological opportunities, while low glare street lighting will prevent disturbance to neighbouring habitat." Peter James Holmes is an SME house builder based in Chilwell. The development of this site will have a direct and positive impact on the local economy through the, uh, through the approximately 69 construction jobs it will create, including apprenticeship places for young people. Alongside these jobs, approximately 105 indirect jobs will be supported and around 24 longer, longer term jobs in the local economy, uh, to do with shops and services. New residents will spend almost £1 million on setting up a home and will spend around four and a half million a year going forward, much locally. Clearly delivering local housing will be a key part of supporting economic rebuilding as we come out of the Covid pandemic. Through section 106 contributions, a bus service will provide, will be provided on into the site, which will also serve the crematorium. Around £700,000 will be spent on enhancing and improving local secondary schools. Over £100,000 will ensure additional, uh, GP appointments and additional contributions will support local highway improvements. Through collaborative working, you have a scheme before you that is endorsed by all relevant technical consultees without objection. Following recognised local concerns regarding historic surface water flooding in Stapleford, further work and assessment has been undertaken to ensure that this development will actively reduce water discharge into the Boundary Brook. Ultimately, we assure the committee of our commitment to achieve a high quality, considerate mix of homes that are sensitive to their location and that will enhance and enrich the lives of local people and the wider local community over time. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Well, the application, uh, the recommendation, I beg your pardon, is set out page 116 onwards to, uh, grant planning permission, outline permission. I will move that recommendation.
I'll second that, Chair.
Thank you very much. I've got councillor Bagshaw wishing to speak, but I'm going to take councillor McCrae first because it's councillor McCrae's ward. So, uh, Richard, uh, first and then David, I'll come to you straight after.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And you did beat me to say that it's actually Stapleford, but I'm not getting into that argument. So I think it's a delivery thing. We all know it's Stapleford because it's the best place in the world. Um, I know, I, I've just got a concern with section 106 money and, and I guess that could probably go for any future developments in this kind of area. I'd, I'd like to see, like I say, it's just a concern and, and I wouldn't know who has to do it. If, if somebody could speak to, I think it's Groundwork, uh, and with regards to Cookies Pond. If anyone knows where that is, it's the pond on Ilkiston Road, ju- just around the corner from here. Uh, and my concern is with all the extra traffic that's, that's going to be in these areas. And I didn't know this till someone from Groundwork told me about it a few years ago. There's like when your cars leak and that, which they do, bits of petrol go on the road, bits of oil and that. And then it's washing into Cookies Pond. So there's some kind of filters need to be put there, which are like underground, but they'd have to explain that. Um, so I was just wondering if section 106 money and if, if people can talk to Groundwork and see if there's anything we can do, because the, these developments in the local area are going to have an impact on that place. And it's, you know, if you've not walked around it, go and have a walk around. It's, it's a great place, full of wildlife and we need to do all we can to protect these places. So that, that was my concern there. Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, Cookies Pond is of course in my ward, um, and something I take very careful interest in. Um, and certainly any opportunity to have it cleaned up, uh, we will do. Uh, and, uh, have no fears, I will be pushing to get as much, uh, investment in that as, uh, possible, as I always do. Um, councillor Bagshaw next, please.
Yeah, Chair, thank you. It's just to advise you, uh, that I have been lobbied on this application. Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, as indeed have I. Um, councillor Pringle is indicating to speak next, please. Councillor Pringle.
Thank you, Chair. Just very, very quickly, it's, uh, I went on the site visit today and, uh, we were taken around by a representative from the, the building company who explained quite a few things that was quite, quite good to hear. Uh, the particular one that, that I particularly liked was that, um, they've recognised from our discussions at last month's meeting and obviously, uh, advice they've had from, uh, from the company that did the flood risk down at, uh, at Trial Park. And they've done a, uh, a flood risk assessment. And what they've found is that there's a particular area which does, uh, is likely to flood. It is, it mentions it in, uh, paragraph 645, where it talks about the, uh, the dark blue area to the north west of the site is a risk of flooding. Well, what that, the, the reason I wanted to mention this, and I, and I know it doesn't actually, it's not actually part of this, this application, but it just sort of confirms what we were talking about in the, in the previous, uh, in the previous application, that, that the whole area here is, uh, a sort of in places flood plain, in other places liable to flooding and other places it's got, it's got little brooks and things. And so it's quite critical and I was very pleased to hear that, that what he was going to do, the, the, the house builder, is he was going to build two very, very large attenuation, uh, tanks, uh, as, as part of the first bit of the, of the building of it. So I think it's great that, that, that this is, this is happening and, and I, I do, uh, support it, especially because he is acting very, uh, very well in, in trying to cut out any potential flood, uh, situation right at the beginning. You know, this is him just asking for outline, uh, planning permission and he's talking, uh, uh, very highly about what he's going to do to try and, uh, mitigate floods for everybody that lives in this area in the future. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you very much. Councillor Ball, please.
Uh, oh, I'll put my screen on. Oh, thank you, Chair. Uh, and I am allowed to speak, am I? After the last session. Without being put.
All for councillor Ball and you know it. Uh, can, can we just keep to the point of issue, please?
Can I carry on, please, if I'm allowed to?
Please do.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, yes, I would like to thank you, um, for the site visit this afternoon. And I must say, I was totally amazed how much land there was there. And we, we walked it, all of it. And, um, it, it was incredible. And I really hope that, I know this is an outline development, uh, application and I do hope that it comes to fruition because I'm sure it'll be wonderful. Um, the only thing I would like to see when it comes back is, I was a bit concerned about the, um, vehicular access. I'm always a bit wary about places that have just got one way in and one way out. Um, because it, it does say that it's for 190 homes and I'm just thinking that may be quite a bit of traffic. Um, but anyway, I look forward to the next one coming along and I'm sure that, um, it'll be, uh, resolved, the vehicular access. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, councillor McGrath, please.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, um, I'd like to thank the applicant actually for, he's probably the first one that, that's mentioned that it'll get apprenticeships involved, which is very good. And also along that, I'm sure Ryan and yourself can negotiate, uh, the trial canal. I'm probably looking at doing something with that, which obviously links into trial itself, which is, well, near enough adjacent to this itself, isn't it? Land alongside, on the other side of the railway line, which will, will give some, yeah, some people a lovely, lovely life to look forward to, hopefully.
Thank you very much. Okay, nobody else is, uh, asking to speak. Uh, councillor Ball, do you want to switch your camera off? Um, and, uh, Mr Dawson, is there anything you want to pick up on, please?
Uh, just two points if I may, Chair. One, um, I shall look into issues regard to Cookies Ponds. I don't think it's an remit of this scheme to do anything about that, but, um, seeing as two councillors requested that, I shall try and find out more information and report back, um, in due course. And secondly, regard to highways, the, um, the highest authority, um, have been involved in this and they've suggested several changes along the road, essentially to mitigate the traffic in and out of the scheme. Um, and a traffic regulation order is, uh, one of the conditions attached to the development, um, whereby they've got to apply to get the speed of the road reduced. As one of the conditions, they need to apply for it, as one of the conditions prior to development actually taking place. So, um, I think the highways issues are covered, so it's been in the report. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Nobody else has asked to speak, so, um, I'll ask Mr Ward to take us through the vote, please.
Thank you very much, Chair. Just a reminder that this was proposed by councillor David Watson, seconded by councillor John McGrath to, uh, recommend, uh, to grant, uh, planning permission in line with the office recommendation. So councillor David Bagshaw.
For.
Councillor Ball.
For.
Councillor Grindel.
For.
Councillor Cullen.
For.
Councillor Handley.
For.
Councillor McCrae.
Against.
Councillor McGrath.
For.
Councillor Marshall.
For.
Councillor Owen.
For.
Councillor Pringle.
For.
Councillor Watts.
For.
Councillor Willamott.
For.
And councillor Simpson.
For.
That's carried, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, we move on then to the final, uh, planning application for tonight, which is 43 Piblico Avenue in Brampton. Uh, members will recall that this was on the, uh, last agenda. We deferred it to, uh, hope for some further negotiations over the design. And we do indeed have an amended design that's come forward. So Mr Dawson, would you like to introduce this scheme, please?
Thank you, Chair. Um, yeah, essentially you've, you've summarised that quite well. The, um, previously deferred at the planning committee in September, with members raising concerns about the overlooking, over intensive development of the site. The main issue that was raised was a two-storey element on the northern corner and whether this should be single story or not. Um, the applicant has now amended this extension with the element on the northern corner being single story. Um, other amendments include the wall instead of the fence and a submission of some details regard to gas prevention measures, which essentially just discharged as a condition earlier on. Um, we believe this reduction to the previous scheme should alleviate members' previous concerns to make the scheme acceptable. And so we have no real issues with it and recommend approval. Um, there was one, uh, one late item received, I think. Um, yeah, there was one late item, one of the neighbours I received basically raises no objection. That's it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. We do have a, um, statement from, uh, the applicant, Mr Colton, so I'll hand over to Mr Ward to read that.
Thank you very much, Chair. So Mr Colton says, "Extending is an affordable way of accommodating my partner's family and mine so we can live together as one family of seven, which we're unable to do at present. Our planning application was deferred at the September committee. Councillors were concerned about the two-storey extension to the north side. However, the front south side extension was deemed acceptable. Councillors indicated they would be comfortable with a single-storey north extension. Our dialogue conducted with our neighbours was praised. This is continued extensively. We have modified our plans as follows. Initially, a north side extension reduced to a single story. And then, uh, our neighbours on Latimer Drive had requested an eight-foot wall height rather than a fence. Our neighbours at number 30 have some residual concerns and have sent two separate comments, initially with listed objections, then again with more accepting tones, us having discussed the plans with them again. Nevertheless, we would like to address their initial points in turn. Over-intensive. They suggest that our extension won't be in keeping with the avenue and that it will be imposing and run boundary to boundary. Our house is one of 12 detached houses in a cluster at one end of the avenue. It is the only one yet to be extended and is located next to two five-bed extended houses. Our extended house will be of similar size to several of the houses on the avenue, so we'll be keeping with the neighbourhood. It will not run boundary to boundary. There will be at least one metre access to either side of our house to access the
There will be at least one metre access to either side of our house to access the rear. The next point is enclosure. They suggest that the single-story extension at a height of 4.3 metres will rise above a 2.8-metre existing hedge, thus restricting light to their property. They also state that the extension is one metre from the boundary in three places. This is misleading, this is a misleading presentation, given that 4.3 metres is the height of the apex of the roof of the single-story extension, which is 3.5 metres at its closest to the existing hedge. The side wall of the extension is only 2.3 metres high and will be one metre at its closest to the boundary. Therefore, we are confident that the new build will not be visible above the hedge. Thus, will have no impact on the light to their property. The extension will be one metre away from boundaries in two places, not three. The next point is utilisation. They suggest that the utilisation of the rooms will be low, given we accommodate our five daughters 50% of the time. The utilisation of our bedrooms will be far higher than many in the neighbourhood. The next point is parking. They're considered, sorry, they're concerned about parking after the build. We have two cars, but parking for up to five cars, the build will not affect the driver at all. In summary, we believe that our plans are proportionate to the plot and will enhance the neighbourhood. We have worked hard to bring our neighbours along with us and will continue to do so. That's the end of the submission. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Well, the recommendation is set out on page 136 and 137, which is to grant planning permission. I will move the recommendation.
I'll second that, Chair.
Thank you very much. This is in my ward. It came to the committee originally because I asked it to come to the committee. And at the committee, I think we dropped some fairly big hints about what would be acceptable. The applicants seemed to me to have taken their hints entirely on board. And it's so much easier when people talk to each other. So I am delighted that they are in dialogue with the neighbours. That's absolutely the way to go. And I think the changes that have been made are exactly what we were asking for last time. So I'm very happy now to support this scheme. Would anybody else like to speak on this? Councillor Grindell, please.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yes, the applicant has come back with the details that we asked. I think that they've ironed out the rough edges that we asked for. I shall be supporting this application. I really can't see any major problems at all, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nobody else is indicated to speak, so we'll go to the vote. Mr Ward, could you take us through the vote, please?
Thank you very much, Chair. Just a reminder that this was proposed by councillor David Watts, seconded by John McGrath. That the recommendation is to grant planning permission in line with the officer recommendation. Councillor David Bagshaw.
Four.
Councillor Lydia Ball. Councillor Grindell.
Four.
Councillor Cullen.
Four.
Councillor Handley.
Four.
Councillor McCrae.
Four.
Councillor McGrath.
Four.
Councillor Marshall.
Four.
Councillor Owen.
Four.
Councillor Pringle.
Four.
Councillor Watts.
Four.
Councillor Willemots.
Four.
And councillor Simpson.
Four.
That's carried, Chair.
Thank you very much. We move on now to agenda item six, which is the appeal decisions. I'll take these one at a time. Because we'll probably go through these quite quickly, if you wish to speak on these, please just shout out rather than try and type into the comments. So firstly, 49 Clive Crescent, Kimberley. This was an application to build a dwelling with all matters reserved. Appeal was refused, so the planning permission was refused and the appeal was refused. Anybody want to say anything on that? Next one then, 49 Atwell Road in Aldworth. This was a two-storey side extension and a single-story extension. In this occasion, the appeal was allowed. Anybody want to raise anything on this? And I should mention as well, Mr Dawson, if you want to say anything, just please let me know, any of these. No questions on that? Okay. Next one, Unit H at the Mobility, so Mobility Care, Castle Industrial Estate. This was an application to retain a non-illuminated hoarding. Planning permission was refused and the appeal was dismissed. And indeed, I've just seen a letter about taking enforcement action now about this. Anybody want to raise anything on this? Now, next one then, 1A Trevor Road in Beeston. This was a two-story side and rear extension of the single-story rear extension and raised decking. This was turned down by the committee against the recommendations of the officers. The appeal was allowed. A cost application was also made that was refused. Anybody want to say anything on this?
Yes, Chairman.
Please do, councillor.
I think it's worth noting about the cost decision being refused in view of the comments tonight, where we have been more or less effectively told that we should always go with the officer decision or the officer recommendation, simply because if we don't, our decision will be overturned and we shall get costs awarded against us. Well, I accept that in this case, the actual decision itself was overturned, but the the appellant didn't, didn't get costs awarded. So it really, you know, there is a purpose in this committee and it is to weigh up all the facts. And we may not necessarily agree with the officer recommendation. And that is how it, how it should be. I think it's just worth pointing out that costs were refused in this case. And it's no guarantee just because you win an appeal that you're going to get costs awarded.
Thank you very much. I'm not sure I agree with you over your paraphrase of what was said earlier, but you're absolutely right. The cost will not necessarily follow a successful appeal. Yes, please.
On this one, yeah, the two things are not comparable. This is one property, the other one was a major development. And, you know, and it was pointed out quite clearly by officers that the risks that were there.
Yeah, thank you. I don't want to get into another long discussion about applications that have already gone through, but thank you very much for the comments. The next one then is 70 Aldworth Lane in Castle. This is an application, outline application for a dwelling. Planning permission was refused, the developers appealed or the applicants appealed and the application, the appeal was dismissed. Anybody want to say anything on this? No. And then finally, 2 Foxlough Road in Newthorpe erects a 1.8-metre fence, timber posts and gates around the perimeter of the property. I did look at this when we were considering or discussing prior to the meeting, the first application we had on the agenda tonight, but really there was no comparison between the properties. The original decision here was to refuse planning permission and that was appealed and the appeal was dismissed. Anybody want to say anything on this? Now, if not, then we move on to the delegated items. I'll take these pages at a time. And again, if anybody wants to raise anything, please just shout out. So the first one is page 180. Page 181. 182. 183. 184. 185. Or 186. And then carrying on on page 188. 189. 190. 191. 192. 193. 194. 195. Okay, nobody raised anything on those. Can I thank you all for your attendance this evening? And I will now declare this meeting closed. Thank you very much.
Chair.